Okay, I'd like to invite everyone to stand for the pleasure of the flag, please. Hey, welcome everybody to the May 15, 2019 meeting. I'd just like to take a second to recognize that we had the passing of Norman Wilson, who was our town attorney for many years, I think from, I think I said in the paper, 1996 through 2014. And I think we all, probably most of us in here, knew Norman and, you know, our thoughts and prayers go out to his family. All right, minutes of May 1st, 2019, we have a motion to approve. A motion and a second. Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor? Motion carries. Financial report, payment of the bills. Do we have a motion to approve the financial report? A motion and a second. Any discussion on the financial report? Hearing none, all in favor? Motion carries. Louie, I think you're going to go ahead and go to the proclamation for us.
Now, this is the proclamation of Mayor Commissioners, proclamation eight dash 2019, State Voting Week. Whereas many citizens enjoy recreational voting, including fishing, water skiing, orfale hunting, canoeing and kayaking while the waters surrounding Elton and Cecil County. And whereas responsible voters understand the importance of wearing personal quotation devices and carrying additional devices on their vessels. And whereas safe voters attend U.S. Coast Guard approved state voting classes and assure their vessels have passed the U.S. Coast Guard Auxiliary Vessel Safety Check. And whereas the Mayor Commissioners of the Town of Elton recognize the voluntary efforts of the United States Coast Guard Auxiliary Maryland Lotillies in promoting safe voting, education, and practice history classroom instruction, vessel examination, and on-water patrols. Now therefore, the Mayor Commissioners of the Town of Elton do hereby proclaim May 18th through the 24th, 2019, as Safe Voting Week.
Do we have a motion to approve proclamation eight dash 2019? Got a motion? Seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? I'd like to make this presentation to these two great gentlemen. Thank you so much. Thank you for bringing that into us. And if we could turn around here and smile for the camera. Perfect. Hey, thank you. Thank you. Very good. Look forward to seeing you again.
Thank you.
All right, Lou, we still have like two minutes. Can we get something else in?
Hey, we've got ordinance two dash 2019 in.
Let's do it.
It's already been introduced. Ordinance two dash 2019 was introduced at the meeting on May 1st. What this does is essentially amends the code of the Town of Elton Title 13, Chapter 1304, Section 1304, 090, extending the waiver on major facility charges for residential development from June 4, 2019 through and expiring on May 31, 2022. And it additionally waives the front foot assessment charges also for new and existing residential development for that same period, June 4, 2019 through and expiring May 31, 2022, consistent with the major facility waiver under paragraph B3, 1304, 090. I recommend that the Board adopt ordinance two dash 2019. Upon adoption will be effective June 4 of this year.
Very good. We have a motion to accept ordinance two dash 2019. We've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, it is 7:05. This is, we're going to have a public hearing on our constant yield tax rate. Lou, do you need to read something in?
Do you have the...
Or Steve?
Steve's going to read that. You advertise.
That Town of Elton noted a proposed real property tax increase. Mayor Commissioners of the Town of Elton proposed increased real property taxes for the tax year beginning July 1, 2019. Estimate real property assessment base win fees by 1.9% from $1,144,510,800 to $1,165,788,148. If the Town of Elton maintains the current tax rate of $1,625.400 on assessment, real property tax revenues will increase by 1.9%, resulting in $135,239 of your real property tax revenues. In order to fully offset the effective increasing assessments, the real property tax rate should be reduced to 0.6240400, the constant yield tax rate. The Town is considering not reducing its real property tax rate enough to fully offset decreasing assessments. The Town proposes to adopt a real property tax rate of 0.6256400 of assessment. This tax rate is 1.9% higher than the constant yield tax rate and will generate $135,239 in additional property tax revenues.
Very good. This is a public hearing. Does anyone have any comments, questions in regards to the constant yield tax rate? Anyone from the Board have any questions or comments? Seeing none, this public hearing is closed at 7:08. Do we have a motion to accept the constant yield tax rate?
You're not going to accept it because we're going to keep the constant, we're going to keep the current tax rate.
Okay, I'm glad you jumped right in there.
What would you do without...
I love Louis. Okay.
You don't have to...
I don't have to do any motion because you just have to hold a public hearing and you've given a public opportunity to comment. Thank you, Louis. So that's the... Okay, well, we're going to, we advertise for 7:10 for the budget introduction. Let's see, Lou, I think we could probably go ahead and open up one of these bids if we could.
Yes. The first project is the Town Square ADA bid to be opened, and I think we would see two bids. First bid from Priority Construction Corporation, Baltimore, Maryland. I don't know if they'll get a bid or not.
You don't want to do that now, do you?
The Priority Construction Corporation bids $133,130 for its job.
And I think our engineering estimate on this was $125? I believe so.
It was about $125. We received $135, but 25 of that went to the design of the project. We have about 110 left.
Okay, thank you.
The next bid is from GES Guardian Environmental Services. I'm surprised they attended the pre-bid meeting because their bid's $267,400. I think they're doing the project twice.
Wow.
Please, I'll repeat that. The bid by GES Guardian Environmental Services is $267,400.
Well, Lou, how would you like to handle this one? Do you want to, do you want to review?
Yes.
Review?
Then you'll review it and then make a recommendation to the Board.
Okay, very good.
We can tentatively say that the low bid, Priority Construction, unless something amiss, it would probably be the one awarded project.
Do we want to make a motion to give the Town Square bid to Priority Construction Corp?
Tentative on meeting all the qualifications.
As, as Lou.
On meeting all the qualifications.
Exactly what Louis had said.
They're contingent. I'll move it.
Yes, we have a, we have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion on this at all? Hearing none, all in favor? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we're going to go right into the, it is 7:10. Would you like to read ordinance three dash 2019, fiscal year 2020 budget? It's going to be presented tonight for introduction purposes.
You got it, Steve?
I can actually read it. Okay, I am hereby present the fiscal year 2020 budget to the Board of Commissioners in conformance with Article 8, Section C8, dash 7 Charter of the Town of Elton, which provides a complete financial plan for the period July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020, inclusive of anticipated revenues and expenditures during the, for said period. Whereas the Mayor is required to present annual budget to the Board of Commissioners for consideration at least 32 days before the beginning of the fiscal year. And whereas the Mayor has prepared and hereby presents the attached budget for fiscal 2020 for consideration by the Board of Commissioners for adoption as attached hereon two. Now therefore, the Board of Commissioners in the Town of Elton hereby ordains the following. Section 1 fiscal year 2020 budget, that the fiscal year 2020 budget is hereby adopted as presented and as or amended attached hereon two, providing the estimated revenue and expenditures for the governmental proprietary funds for the period of July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020. Section 2 real property tax rate, that the fiscal year 2020 real property tax rate shall be 0.6356 per hundred of the real property assessment determined by the Maryland Department of Assessments and Taxation effective July 1, 2019. Section 3 personal property rate, that the fiscal year 2020 personal property tax rate shall be $1.21 per 100 of the personal property value determined by the Maryland Department of Assessments and Taxation effective July 1, 2019. And then section 4 is water and sewer rates, that the water and sewer rate shall be charged and collected as set forth under the Code of the Town of Elton Title 13, Chapter 13.04, Section 13.04.290, unless otherwise amended. So I'd like to go ahead and move forward with my presentation if I could. So if we could dim down the lights a little bit. It's starting to brighten it up a little bit. Actually, to the Board and Commissioners, once again, this is being presented tonight for introduction purposes only. And as you can see on, on the very first slide, if you look to the far right, fiscal year 19, and I'm going to take you all the way down to the bottom, in fiscal budget 19, we were at $18,125,425. We are proposing fiscal 20, fiscal year 20, to be at $17,198,943. And as you can see, our, all departments, the general government has went down, the public safety side has gone down, the public works department has gone down, parks and rec has gone down, our debt service has gone down, our economic development, we're going to drop that from $125,000 down to $100,000. It doesn't change anything for our economic, for our Main Street committee. Donations actually increased slightly, and the fire department gets a little bit more money because their, it's based upon, in our charter states how much money that they would receive. So if we go to the next slide, you'll see we have a pie chart, and you'll see that on public safety, we spend about 39% of our budget, 27% goes to public works, 29% goes to general government, 2% on our parks and rec, 1% of our money goes toward our debt service, 1% on donations, and about 1% on economic development. So if we go to the next slide, you'll see over the years, if you look back at 2003, and as you worked your way up to 2020, you've seen that the tax rate has gone up, it has gone down, it has gone up, and it's been at the same rate for the last, proposed the last three fiscal years. Next slide, please. When you look at our unassigned fund balance, you can see when you go back down to 2006 and work your way up, we have used quite a bit of our fund balance over the years, and it's yet to be determined how much fund balance we will have left over from fiscal year 19. But we are planning on using most of our current fund balance to fund fiscal year 20's budget. So we go to the next page. What I wanted to show on our long-term debt, the Town of Elton, if you look at 2011, we had, had a debt of, general fund debt of $2,298,935. And if you go all the way down to 2019, you can see that we paid that debt down to $246,279. From 2014, 15, 16, 17, and 18, we have not taken any loans for the Town of Elton. We've actually paid for all of our capital purchases. But in 2019, we're still proposing to borrow $616,000. So our ending balance, as you can see, will creep back up ever so slightly there. Next slide. What I wanted to show was that the statement of net position of the proprietary funds currently in 2000, by the, hopefully at the end of this fiscal, you'll see that we still have $2,477,755 in our major facility fund, $2,657,522 in our water fund, we have $7,97,148 in our sewer fund, which brings a total of $12,232,425 in our proprietary funds. Next slide, please. So this slide is on the wastewater treatment plant. The Town of Elton completed this project in 2019. At that time, we, between 2008 and 2010, the Town of Elton borrowed $21,395,474. And as of today, we have retired all those $12 million of that debt, and currently our current balance on our wastewater treatment plant is $9,596,241. Next slide. These are the highlights of this fiscal 2020 budget. Our proposed property tax rate will remain the same. Our proposed business personal property tax will remain the same. We are proposing a slight increase per quarter, which would be about 50 cents per month for our trash collection fee. And once again, that's kind of a pass-through tax, not tax, a fee that is through our hauler and including the adjustments with the county. When you look at the salary adjustments, we have a, we have an agreement with the EPD's former officers, and by the contract, they will receive their 3% increase on their anniversary date. All non-police employees will not receive any cost of living in this fiscal year 20. We have vacant positions that will not be filled, as you can see listed there. Item number six, the fringe benefits, we're projecting that the health insurance increase will be 5% this year. So let's flip the page. The Main Street Maryland program will still be funded with $100,000. This budget is proposing that we acquire the Armory Acquisition. We're showing that it's going to be acquired through a grant process. The Neighborhood Community Center, which we're in the process, is going to show that the budget includes funding of 3.1 million. $400,000 of that will come from the CDVG grant, and then the remaining $2,700,000 will come from our sewer fund, and we're going to borrow that from ourselves. So the new debt service will be created, that we're going to pay ourselves back $55,000. I just want to make sure that's correct. That's for the community center that...
Yeah.
So we're going to pay ourselves back $55,000 on the sewer fund loan, and then the $136,249 is an obligation for the fiscal line capital equipment that you saw on the other slide, $600-plus thousand dollars. So there'll be $136,000 of that's going to be moving into this, into this budget. The fund balance of $1,360,411 will be used to fund this budget or to balance the budget. Next page. The water fund, there's not going to be any increase to the water rate, no new positions. This includes $175,000 for water main and valve replacements. It includes $300,000 for rehabilitation of the water treatment plant, and we're going to use some of our fund balance in our water fund to make sure that we're able to do these projects. On the sewer fund, there's no increase in the sewer rate. There's no new positions in the sewer department. There's an increase, includes $2.700,000 loan to the general fund for the Neighborhood Community Center. Proposed capital purchases are $366,000 for a total of using part of the fund balance of $2,956,283. Woo! And that's the end of the slide. All right, so we can turn the lights back on. Very good. So that is what's in the proposed fiscal year 2020 budget. Does anyone from the Board have any questions, comments about the proposed budget? Now, once again, I want to stress that this is only for introduction only. We're going to try to accept it on the first Wednesday, June 5.
For adoption.
Just for adoption, and at that point, we can make any changes that we need to make. But yes, sir.
Just for correction, for the record, on the highlights, you said on 10, that the general obligation on fiscal year 09, 19?
19, thank you. Anyone else? This is a public hearing, so if anyone in the audience has any questions, comments, Mr. Giblin, can you come, you want to sign in under, under the one that says the budget? State your name and address on that sheet, if you could, for the record.
There's three ones here.
There's three, the one that says for the budget. There should be one fiscal year 20. And your comments, sir?
I have one question and one request.
Yes, sir.
Does the new budget give the police department, public works, and parks and recreation 100% of the requested budgets?
I would say that the, the answer would be no.
Okay, what percentage roughly does it give them of their requested budget?
I would say that it would be personnel that would be missing, and Parks and Rec requested one more additional person. The police department had four, I think it was four...
Three.
Three, three personnel, and public works had four personnel.
Okay, well, are these three departments comfortable with the new budget?
I don't believe that anyone's comfortable from staff with this new budget.
Okay. All right, but that was my question. I also have a request. School will be out in another month, and I've mentioned this in the past, that there's going to be a lot of high school students who cannot find summer jobs. And I'm just wondering if additional funding can be provided to Parks and Recreation, Public Works, and the Police Department for inaugural exploratory trial programs where they hire high school students? And I don't know what it would be for. Could be mulching in the parks, it could be additional cleanup. I don't, I don't know what there is, but I'm suggesting that there be additional funding for trial programs to hire high school students during the summer. Now, this could be part-time, the summer gets very hot, maybe just in the mornings. It could be just on Saturdays. But on this thing, asking, that it be considered to provide some additional funding for new trial programs to hire high school students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Come on down, Mr. Lemon.
I know you all put a lot of work into it and a lot of effort, and, Mr. Giblin, I'd looked at the budget, and I would suggest to you, there's no money to hire anybody else. We're, I think we're in trouble, particularly next year. Just an opinion. But I think you've worked very hard to put everything together. On the sewer part of it, the state of Maryland has a rule that you can't take money out of that and use it on something else. Is that what it is?
No, I think we can, we can't use it for anything. We can borrow from ourselves, aren't we?
Yeah, but you can't take it out and just appropriate it for something else.
That's correct.
Is that a state of Maryland rule?
It's a...
Not their money.
Yeah, I don't think there's any rules prohibit that, but it's not a transfer, it's a, it'll be a loan.
Okay. I'm just curious, trying to learn.
But the answer is yes, we can borrow from ourselves, and I could say that we could forgive ourselves from that payment.
Oh, you could?
Oh, I don't know. I would think we could.
That's an interesting thought. Yeah. I'm concerned about the personnel creep, when I talk about that increase in personnel. And the area that I want to talk about, I looked at 2016, I looked at 2018, I looked at 2020, and the number of employees is up in this year's budget over 18 and 16. And the main area of concern is water and sewer. And I have a question there. Water has moved from 8.21 people in 2006 to 13.26 in 18, and 1711 in 2020. The sewer, same thing, 925 to 135, 1585. Is that because of the smart meters? Why have we, why is that an increase like that?
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to have to defer that question over. Well, I'm going to, I'm going to have to defer that question over.
Well, part of that is the reassignment of the police salaries, recognizing efforts that they put forth in the water and sewer system.
So it's not actual employees?
Well, maybe some, a lot of that is a coding of the...
Pardon?
A lot of that is the coding of the police now through the water and sewer, what, 2%? 2% each to 4% total.
I can't hear you, I'm old.
A lot of that is the recoding of the police salaries that were previously all in the general fund, shifting 2% of their salary to the water fund and 2% of their salary to sewer fund, recognizing that they police all those activities as well. So that created additional positions.
So it's not what it appears to be?
Well, it's not that dramatic of a number, no.
It's not actual bodies.
Because, because you know, it says...
Oh, okay.
Full-time equivalent positions. The budget says full-time equivalent positions, so you would assume those are accurate numbers.
Well, they are. They are accurate numbers.
Of people?
Of people, yes.
Okay, well, explain that to me again, because I don't know.
Well, the 20% of a person that was a cop is now part of water and 20% of the same person is now part of the sewer fund. That's 20% of a person, five 20% isn't on a person.
Why do we do that?
To recognize that they are the police of not just the general fund activities in the town, but also the water systems and the sewer systems. They police the entire town. They provide public safety for everything in the town, not just, you know, everything that takes place in the water sewer fund.
Okay. I'll accept that, but I'll move on. I don't want to take up all your time. One of the, one of the issues here is, well, your main issue is cost and how do you cover all these costs that you have coming up with the rec center and all these other things. And I'm just suggesting that you all take a second look at overtime and I'm aware that overtime, let's say for the police department, they go to court and they have to go special crimes. And I'm also aware that in police supports or services, it has to be there for a particular reason, that's all, but explain to me. But I'm suggesting you have in this budget about $600,000 of overtime. So my suggestion is that you look at that in all areas and see if there's a way that you can approach it differently. Maybe you can't, but I'm just suggesting that an open mind and a different approach, you may be able to figure out how to save money. You know, like, police have to go to court, but maybe it can be scheduled, you know, in advance and maybe it can be scheduled, they can go on regular hours and not overtime, that kind of stuff. Anyways, the suggestion, these are all suggestions.
They're great to say, suggestions.
Well, I don't know about that, but anyway, they're suggestions. I wanted to ask a question, the finance department, looking back over these records, and I missed this last year, you added two meter technicians. What do they do?
They read the meters. They read water meters, they install water meters, they check their leaks for all the properties that are built for water and sewer services.
I mean, we, up till last year, we didn't have those two employees, but we always still read meters.
We had one and then now we have two.
Pardon?
InfraMark.
Well, we hired the one first, we hired two first. That was originally all done through contracted services with Savant Trent, which is now InfraMark. But then we hired that person who did it for InfraMark for us as our employee, then added a second employee.
So you brought it into the house, is what you're saying?
That's correct.
Okay. So I understand that, because you went from like six employees to eight or something like that.
And they actually reduced their contract to recognize that they weren't providing that service.
So it's all set, okay. Public Works, I have a suggestion, they do a super job, so I don't want to cast any negative dispersions here. I'm suggesting that you get back to your very good idea that you couldn't put to bed of these grass clippings. What my observation is, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, is that we move the leaf truck around all summer and pick up grass clippings. If we weren't picking up grass clippings, we wouldn't have to move that truck around all summer because there's no leaves. So my suggestion is that you, that was a great idea you had, you couldn't put it together to your satisfaction, so I'm suggesting that you take another look at that.
Thank you.
And there's all kinds of ways to do it, charge for it, tell them they can't do it. You know more ways than I do. But I'm suggesting that that would be another way to cut costs. The, I wanted to ask about, the only other thing, couple things, small things here, the Artesian Water 394. I thought we, I've heard discussions here about that we have water available and one thing or another and we were going to take a look at providing our own water, which required by the state of Maryland, as I understand it, to have a backup. But we would require, we would, you know, we'd take a look at it and figure out how to supply our own water and I'm sure there's some cost to that, but then get rid of this Artesian thing.
We don't have the capacity to generate over a million gallons of water in an emergency, but Artesian does. We wouldn't have the, we wouldn't be able to have the state appropriate a million more gallons to us if there's not the capacity in the town to do that. That's why we have the Artesian interconnection. We've already been through that whole tedious process with Maryland Department of Environment.
Okay, so I do understand that, okay. Another thing concerns me is always the police. I know you've asked them not to hire anybody, but I think that's what you have for this year.
We won't attempt, we won't turn down any good person.
But that's my suggestion is, what I've heard in these meetings is that it's very difficult to get a policeman getting qualified, getting on board and one thing or another. And it's certainly going to be possible if somebody's going to quit or whatever. And it's also possible that you'll, you'll change this and say you can hire. And if you did that, it's, my observation is it takes a long, long time to bring somebody in. So my only suggestion is there, that I wouldn't just completely cut it off, I would pursue that and if you happen to hire somebody, you know, just do it.
We have two officers in the police academy now. Yeah, we do. Yeah, we have two officers in the academy now that we hired.
We've done a great job of getting them up from this point to this point.
Yes.
You look back at the records, we went through a number of years where you never get up to a number that you needed. You may not be at the number you need now, but you're not, you're not at the full number.
Yeah, we're not where we were about six years ago. So we're not where we were six years ago, about six years ago. We're very short. We're up, but you're right, we need, we need to, we need to keep hiring.
Oh, you and I are coming through the same area, okay. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Lemon.
Thank you, Mr. Lemon.
Anyone else have anything to say during this public hearing? Come on down there, Miss Diane Hare.
I've been weeding for a number of years when I could by pulling weeds. We need a weeder. I'll train somebody. But I can't do it anymore. And I don't know if we can, if it's not in the budget, if we could find some way or somehow to do some of the weeding. I notice it's pretty bad out there with all the rain and so forth.
Very good. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Is there any place?
Maybe now.
Are there any places, like you're talking about weeding, where you could actually use like weed killer on things or is this stuff that has to be pulled out by hand?
I'm a hand puller.
Oh, I'm a squirt killer.
Weed squirt.
Diane will take care of it.
Weed squirt.
Anyone else have anything to say about this proposed budget?
Seeing none, it is 7:40, this public hearing is closed. Do we have a motion to accept fiscal ordinance 3-2019, the fiscal year 2020 annual budget for adoption only? I'm sorry, for introduction only. We have a motion? In a second, any discussion on this? Hearing not all in favor? Motion carries. So we have introduced the budget, but there could certainly be changes. All right, Lou, you're back on.
The next item is, Metropark Way project, you only received one bid from Eastern Sales and Engineering in Baltimore. Eastern Sales, an engineering company.
Did we seek other bids?
Oh, yeah, this is, this went out the bid. This is all we got.
We just got one.
They bid $264,897. I'm sorry. They bid $264,897 for the project. We won't be able to do it for that amount of money, we only have $210,000 in grants so that we can see, or exceed their grant.
What was the bid amount again?
Yeah, $264,897 and our grant was for $210,000.
I would go back to them and see if they can do it for $210,000. All right, next up?
The next item I have is Alton Alliance request for waiver about alcohol for Friday events. The Alton Alliance wants a waiver for alcohol for July 5th, 2019, 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. August 2nd, 2019, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. And September 6th, for from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. Downtown First Friday Events.
We have a motion to accept the alcoholic waivers for the First Friday Events. We have a motion?
Second.
In a second, any discussion on these events? Hearing not all in favor? Motion carries.
Okay, Alton Alliance also request a waiver for June 15th, 2019, between 7:00 and 10:30 p.m. For the Downtown Dinner Under the Stars event that would be held on North Street from 117 to 118 North Street, Main Street.
And that is a summary, okay. We have a motion to give a waiver for the Dinner Under the Stars event?
No motion.
Got a motion?
Second.
In a second, any discussion on it? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
They were my last two, I haven't somebody to hand up.
Okay, I have nothing new to report. Rob?
No, I have nothing yet.
Nothing?
I have nothing.
Nothing new? Okay, this is the time of the meeting, we open up the floor for the public, if they have any comments for the good of the town of Elton. Mr. Ed Ginder?
The vines on Bridge Street over the railroad are overtaking the fence again.
On what?
Bridge Street Bridge, over the railroad.
I saw them, they're very robust vines and which is wrong there. Mr. Giblin, you've had a comment?
Time for public comments?
Yes, public comments.
Which sheet do I sign?
Uh, the one that's a public comment sheet.
Summer is approaching quickly and it'd be a good time for picnic. Now, initially, I was thinking just for the police department and their families, right? And then I'm thinking, wait a minute, all of the town employees work very hard and the picnic could be for them and their families. And my idea is to utilize Howard Pond, that it could be heavily stocked with warm water fish, perch, bass, and catfish. Perhaps the day before the picnic, tents could be rented, commercial grills could be rented, picnic tables could be rented, you could have hamburgers and hot dogs, perhaps even steamed crabs. And what I'm thinking is that, like I said, if the pond was heavily stocked the day before, maybe it would be catch and release, you know, for the town and then the next day it'd be open to the public. And in addition to heavily stocking it, there could be some whoppers stocked in there just to, you know, encourage attendance. And I just think it would be a nice reward for the town employees and their families to have a picnic and to utilize Howard Pond, you know, for this. Everything could be rented for that and maybe even have 3.2 beer for the adults.
There you go. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Giblin. Ms. Aragon?
I would just like to thank Parks and Rec for helping us with our cleanup bid. We had voices of pork cut out and pitch in, about a dozen of their members, and we cleaned up about 50 yards of this horrible dumping area adjacent to our neighborhood, which would not have been possible without Dan's guys pitching in and getting into the dumpster floor.
He's having a Park and Rec.
I'm sorry.
I was crazy, I was crazy for a second.
I'm very tired, I'm sorry, Dan.
He was back here.
It's been a long, long week. But I did, I did want to thank Dan's crew because they stuck with us and moved all of the trash and, I mean, we must have pulled 20 tires out and we didn't clean up as much as we had hoped because it was a whole lot denser with trash than we had thought. But we'll do it again. Dan said that we pulled six tons.
Six tons, we spend a lot of money on Hollisworth Manor.
I can see that.
We do, all the way around, but we're happy to do it.
We are making progress in our neighborhood.
That's fantastic.
We have more things coming.
That is great news. Anyone else have anything to say this evening?
I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Pat?
I see under the health budget, okay, for mosquito control, how do we, can somebody contact them if they want a certain area to be sprayed, especially like for the black flies?
I would say contact Dan and Dan would be the one that you would reach out to and...
Cecil County actually sprays for it.
Oh, okay. So if Cecil County does a spray, we can pass the information on for you then.
Because I have scouts coming down for a week at Upland and the little dudes, and they get eaten up by horseflies, that particular week in June where they all, all the flies come out.
Wow. Very good. This meeting's adjourned.